Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, May 2nd, 2016, at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the north wall. Would you please stand now and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And we're going to start our meeting with the mission and visions. The vision is first, every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Fay.
Here.
Gadding.
Here.
America.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas.
Here.
Wayne. Williams.
Present.
Seven present.
Okay, I think I saw Mr. Wayne here, just a...okay, so he's here. And Mr. Snow is not here. At this time, I would entertain a motion to excuse Mr. Snow.
Motion to excuse Mr. Snow.
There's a motion by Mr. Vargas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Fay. Roll call, please.
Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
No.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Six aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I will introduce Mrs. Farmer. She has the school spotlight for this evening.
Give me just a second, I want to show off, we've got a cool new graphic for school spotlight. And there it is. Madam President, members of the board, the spotlight for this evening is on four schools, Benson High School, North High School, Buffett Middle School, and Mars Middle School. Congratulations to the teams who competed in the Heartland Regional Robotics Championship held at Omaha North High School during the weekend of February 27th. There were approximately 80 middle and high school teams from across Nebraska and Iowa that competed against each other for 11 spots to the world championship. Those will take place in Louisville, Kentucky this April. It is with great honor that OPS was awarded five out of 11 spots to compete at the world championship, April 20th through April 23rd. We salute and welcome the school teams, staff members, and career education supervisor, Mr. Jim Mussel. I'd like to invite Jim to the podium. He will speak on behalf of all of the schools, and then we'd like to just take a brief photo with the board.
Thank you very much. Before I start, I would like to invite all of the teams and the coaches to please just kind of come up, and you can just kind of come up front here and stand around me, please. Just while they're doing that, just to kind of give you a little background of kind of the road that they've gone through this year, in the state of Nebraska, we...there are currently 356 teams registered to compete. Seventy-seven of those are Omaha Public School teams, middle school through high school. What was said was for the Heartland Regional Competition, to get to the Heartland Regional, they had to go through local competitions, which there were 18 events that these kids did participate in, and that was from the beginning of November through, would be, I guess, the beginning of February. With that, nine high school teams and 10 middle school OPS teams qualified for that state competition. As it was said, there were 80 total that were there. From that, we did have five OPS teams that qualified for the World's Vex Rbodies Competition, which we'll be leaving for at 7:00 AM tomorrow morning. So it's right here. Just to give you a little bit about Worlds, this year, there's estimated that there's going to be approximately 1,100 teams competing at this event from around the world. It's the largest robotics competition in the world. Last year, there were 29 nations represented, and it's expected that there's going to be more this year. So with that, I would like to introduce you to the Omaha North, two teams that qualified. Mr. Weimer is their coach. We have Mars Middle School, which is Mr. Kramer as their coach. We have Benson High School, which is Mr. Troxell, and we also have Buffett, which is...
Torpin.
Torpin. Grant Torpin. So he's their coach as well. So here's the group.
So we've been to...I've been to a few robotics competitions. Does somebody maybe from one of the teams want to share what the most challenging part of this year's competition was? Someone from North.
Everybody looks down.
Yeah, don't look down. Come on forward.
I personally would say this year's game has probably been the toughest. It relies mostly on how well you build, and then, not only on your building skill, but also your programming skill. So it kind of brings everything that we learned in school to a physical robot that we build, so.
Awesome. Well, I know it's very fun to watch those competitions, so we just want to wish you all the very, very best when you head down, and you'll be competing against lots of other schools, and if I remember right, you build alliances, right? Is that correct? And the whole alliance thing is a big part of it, so good luck on building your alliances, and good luck with your programming and keeping your robots running. What we'll do, if...I don't know if anybody else has questions? If not, what we'll do is, well, let's...have you come into the center here, and we'll take a picture? How about, well, we're all getting ready to do that. How about you come around first, we'll shake your hands, then we'll do the picture, and then we'll be able to dismiss. So if you want to start right there, how about our Buffett young man, and he's going to shake everybody's hand, and you all would follow. all. Could you all raise your hand if you've been to Worlds before, just so we have some kind of sense? Oh, very good, so we have lots of folks going for the first time. Well, congratulations on that.
Without this podium in the way.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good luck, good luck.
With that, we're going to move on to Treasurer's Report. Mrs. Kenokee?
I would like to submit for your review the March Treasurer's Report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have some.
Okay, so if anyone has any questions, if you'd get those to either Mrs. Kenokee or Mr. Ray, and I'm stalling here, but we're going to call on Mr. Evans. We're ready for the Superintendent's Report. Busy getting his coffee. All right.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of comments. First, this time of year is always a challenging time of the year for our teachers. We're kind of at the tail end of NESA assessments, which are really challenging, the...I guess the pressure they put on themselves, and the desire for our kids. It's one of those pieces I wish wasn't quite as intensive, to be quite honest. But they take it serious, and they want their young people to do as well as they can, and I want the board and community to know, the early indicators are that our kids are going to show growth in student achievement, which I'm not surprised, as I visited two schools this morning, and I'll be visiting two more tomorrow, and trying to spread out, and just thanking them for all their work. So I just want to give a shout out to our teachers, and thank them for all the hard work. This time of year, if you have friends who are teachers, and you talk to them, they feel the intensity of the pressure. So please, let's just give them a shout out, and I want the board to know, and the community to know, that the early indicators show that student achievement's going to go up, achievement gap will be diminished, and again, it's just a credit to our high-quality staff in all of our schools, and the great work they're doing. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any board members who have comments that they'd like to share this evening? Mrs. Fay?
Thank you. So on Friday, I went out to Harrison Elementary and saw their Dancing Classrooms culminating event with their fifth graders, which was...it's always really fun. If you've never been to a Dancing Classrooms culminating event at one of the elementary or middle schools, or one of the ACP classes at the high schools that do them, they're really fun. But right now, at this very moment, that a middle school competition's going on at Lewis and Clark, Mr. Ray's son is in it, he's a star, I'm sure he's probably just totally winning the whole thing. And then the fifth grade competition will be in a couple of weeks as well. So if you have an opportunity to go and see Dancing Classrooms at one of the OPS elementary, middle, or high schools that do it, then I encourage you to go and check it out. It's a social development program that uses ballroom dance, and I just think they do a phenomenal job. And then the competition, which I think is also going to be the fifth grade ones at Lewis and Clark as well, I think, in a couple of weeks, so.
All right. Well, it's also the time of year when there's lots of concerts, so be checking the schools around you, and you'll get to hear some wonderful music and singing at the different concerts. So I encourage everyone to look into that as well. If no one else has comments, we will move on to public comment. And our first public comment is Jim Wright...Jim Enright, I'm sorry. So if you would please state your name and the spelling of your last name, and then you'll have five minutes to speak. Oh, here he is. Mr. Enright, you are the first public comment. So if you could just state your name and your...the spelling of your last name and your address, and then you'll have five minutes.
Members of...Madam President and members of the board, my name's James Enright, E-N-R-I-G-H-T, 3303 R Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68107. I just had a comment on the...some board rules, a board rule that I'd like you to consider, I hope you consider, is allowing the members of the board and the superintendent to comment on what...I'm out of breath. I'm out of shape. Comment on what the public speakers have to say. I don't say interrupt them, or wait till everybody's done talking, and then have a time for the board members to give their opinion. I think the public would like to know what the board members think about what the public is telling them. I know they used to do this years ago. They did this. Must have changed. I've been coming to board members...board meetings 25 years, and I always used to comment on what people said. Sometimes, most of the time, they were polite comments, and this group, I know they're going to be polite. I remember one board meeting, it was budget, and one of the board members said, "We've heard from a lot of people like you, you're a phony." Well, that's not going to happen, as a rule. And there's a few things that happened before on this board that don't happen anymore, fortunately. And also, the city council, when I go to city council meetings, you can almost be sure they'll comment on what people have said. Somebody will comment after everybody's done speaking. I don't say...I don't think we should have a guy speak or a woman speak, and then say, "Well..." and then just brush in a comment, wait till everybody's done speaking. And sometimes, board members understandably get frustrated, and I think it's more appropriate, if they need a safety valve, to just comment verbally on what was said, rather than walking out on the speakers, which has happened. I don't think that's appropriate in a Republican democracy that we live in, that when people have been authorized to speak, I don't think it's appropriate to walk out on them. I think that everybody should listen. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, and just for clarification, to avoid open meetings, we don't comment, so...but thank you for your comments. The next speaker is... Do you want to expand on that a little bit further, and explain why? So the open meetings does not allow us to speak to topics that aren't on the agenda, and therefore, if we were engaging in conversation, we may move beyond what's actually on the agenda and violate open meetings. So that's why we stick to only the president acknowledging the speaker, and then focusing on Mr. Ray, getting information to the individual who asked questions. So it's a...it's an open meetings, trying to ensure that we're following the rules of the statutes in Nebraska. Our next speaker is John Dokery. If you would please state your name, the spelling of your last name, and your address, and then you'll have five minutes to speak, and Mr. Ray will keep you informed at one minute and 30 seconds to go.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Dokery. It's D-O-C-K-E-R-Y, and I live in Omaha, Nebraska, at 8616 North 57th Street. I just want to start with a statement tonight, which is, "We have now learned that OPS has chosen HealthSmart and Advocates for Youth Curriculum for middle and high school pilot programs. Both are endorsed by Planned Parenthood, and we feel should be rejected." It's pretty clear that OPS is not honest about their relationship with Planned Parenthood. At the curriculum nights, a few weeks ago, 26 curriculums were presented to parents when it was probably already known that most would not meet the Planned Parenthood-endorsed standards. Why did they even bother to show these other curriculums, other than to confuse parents? There is usually something wrong when lack of transparency and deceit are an issue. The cycle goes on and on. Omaha Public Schools has been teaching condoms, comprehensive sex education for years, and yet Douglas County has one of the highest sexually transmitted disease rates in the nation. They have not acknowledged any responsibility for the miserable results, and now offer CSE, comprehensive sex education, as a solution. The cause of the high risk of STDs is not from the failure to use condoms, but from encouraged promiscuous sexual activity amongst our youth. CSE teaches students that condoms are safe and healthy when used properly, which is a lie. Young teens do not experience the 90-some...the claimed 97% success rate that two adults in a committed relationship receive. Young teens are risk averse, and no matter how many condom races or sex information they receive, in the heat of the moment, they are inconsistent and achieve much lower results in protection. Some STDs are transferred skin to skin and are not prevented by condoms at all. Teens cannot get a driver's license till they are 16, not because of their coordination, but because of their decision-making abilities. Many students who get STDs are already using condoms. Our children should be taught the truth, which is the opposite of comprehensive sex education teaches. They need to be taught the importance of delaying sexual activity, not given a green light for contraceptive sex. It is now proven that the more sexual partners you have, the higher the incidence of negative outcomes in a child's life. Potentially lower life expectancy, more STDs, more abortions, higher rates of divorce, and more emotional instability. Most parents want their kids to abstain from sexual activity. They want them to be happy, healthy, and truthfully informed. They hope to see grandchildren whose parents are in long-term committed relationships. We need to be more honest with our youth about the risks of sexual activity with multiple partners, different lifestyles, and the real risks of relying on condoms. Recently, the World Herald had a picture of a prom dress made of condoms displayed in shops to remind mothers and daughters to be healthy about sex. This is another lie. It's a green light to sexual activity and says you're protected when you use a condom, so go ahead. It's not just the activity, but also the multiple partners that compromises one's health. When sexual freedom is taught, sexual health suffers. You can't have it both ways. Planned Parenthood since 1970 has pushed for sex education in public schools. In 1986, Fay Waddleton, its president, established a goal to mandate K through 12 comprehensive sex education in every school in America. They want to get kids hooked on sex to create more sexually active teens that seek Planned Parenthood services. They have a clear conflict of interest and receive over $500 million of taxpayer money. The truth is that OPS has lied to the parents, the OPS board, and the district by stating the OPS has never and will never be involved with Planned Parenthood. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Joe Gregory. If you would please state your name, the spelling of your last name. Joe Gregory?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Oh.
I thought because I was with JP Lord, I had to sign in and do the procedure.
Oh, no, no problem, no problem. Yep, that's great. Thank you so much. So this gentleman is with JP Lord School, and will be part of the presentation with JP Lord a little bit. All right. With that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
So motion by Ms. Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Fay. Are there any abstentions? Mrs. Underwood?
I'll be abstaining from item I-5.
Okay. I-5? Any others? I think Mr. Wayne.
I haven't looked at all the consent agenda, so I won't be voting on all of these items.
Okay. So are you abstaining from the whole thing?
Yes, I'm not voting on the whole thing.
Okay. So with that, we will do roll call with Mrs. Underwood abstaining from I-5, and Mr. Wayne abstaining from the entire agenda. Roll call, please.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne. Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. All right. With that, we're going to move to information items. And our first information item is J-1A, Summary of Changes to OSER's Legislation Bill 447. And with that, we will welcome, I believe, Mr. Clutterbuck from Baird Homes, and Ms. Cecilia Carter, who's our new OSER's Director.
Good evening, Madam President and board. Cecilia Carter, Director for OSER's Omaha School Employees Retirement System, and I'm here this afternoon...this evening to introduce Mr. Gary Clutterbuck, who is attorney with Baird Homes, to go over a high-level summary of the changes from Legislative Bill 447 that was passed earlier this year, March 24th, and signed by the governor on March 30th. So with that...
No further ado. Thank you. Included in your agenda materials tonight was a summary of changes to the retirement system under LB 447. It was actually presented to the Board of Trustees at their meeting of April 6th. The summary that's in the materials provides a detailed description and explanation of the major changes that were made by the legislation, but tonight, I wish to provide a higher-level review and overview of these changes with the focus on the changes that directly affect the school district and the Board of Education. Available for questions at any time as we go along, please refer to stop, you know, of course, I'll entertain any questions you may have after we get through the overview here. But let's start off with the centerpiece of the legislation, and that is the transfer of all investment duties and authorities for the retirement system to the Nebraska Investment Council and the State Investment Officer. That's going to take effect on January 1 of 2017. Beginning on that date, the Board of Education, as well as the Board of Trustees, will have no duties, responsibilities, or authority for the investment or reinvestment of the retirement system's assets. Nor will you have any input or responsibility for any investment decisions, rules, contracts, rules, or regulations involving OSER's investments. The Nebraska Investment Council, then, will employ the investment advisors, managers, and professionals for the actual investment of the funds of the retirement system. As a side note, the legislation also requires that a transition plan be put together by the Board of Trustees and the State Investment Officer. That's to be completed by July 1. That will actually set forth the game plan, so to speak, for the transfer of investment authority control that will occur on January 1 of 2017. The second major change that was made by LB 447 is to vest sole authority and responsibility for the administration of the non-investment affairs of the retirement system in the Board of Trustees, rather than the Board of Education. That, beginning on July 1 of 2016, the Board of Education will not have any duty or responsibility for the general administration of the retirement system, except for the limited extent provided for in the act. It's a very limited involvement by the Board of Education and school district after that date. As you're aware, the current statutes generally have vested co...co-responsibility and authority in the Board of Education and in the Board of Trustees for the administration of the retirement system. As part of these changes, the Board of Trustees has now been reorganized into a seven-person board. It's been reduced from 10 members down to seven members, starting on July 1 of 2016. It's been reduced from ten members down to seven members, starting on July 1 of 2016. And that was done by essentially removing the three trustees that are appointed from the Board of Education to serve on the Board of Trustees. Aside from this change, then, the makeup of the trustees is generally as it is today. We have two members that will be elected from the certificated staff, one member from the classified staff, one member who is elected by the annuitants. We also have the two outside business persons. They will not be elected, but will continue to be approved by the Board of Education after being recommended by the trustees. And then finally, we have the superintendent or your designee, who will serve as an ex officio and voting trustee. Along with these changes, there will also be four-year terms for the, each of the board members will have a four-year phase-in of elections and appointments, but after that time, there'll be four-year terms for each trustee. Now, complementing all of that change are a number of specific governance changes that were enacted. These include, first of all, the executive director will now serve at the pleasure of the Board of Trustees, and they will actually appoint and hire the executive director with the approval of the Board of Education going forward. The administrator, then, will have the duty and responsibility for hiring, dismissing, and supervising all of the staff for the retirement system, although the administrator and the staff will continue to be OPS employees as they are now. However, the statute does now clarify and direct that the employment costs for those individuals will be reimbursed to the school district from the retirement system, so that their salary, benefit costs, and employment taxes will be reimbursed to the school district. Another governance change is that the trustees can now hire their own counsel for the retirement system and for the Board of Trustees in particular. As you're aware, before LB 447, the statutes mandated that the attorney for the school district had to be the attorney for the Board of Trustees and the retirement system. The trustees will now, going forward, contract with the actuary for the retirement system, but the selection of the specific actuary will still be subject to approval of the Board of Education. And then finally, a somewhat subtle change is that the Board of Trustees will no longer be involved with recommending how much contribution needs to be made to the retirement system from the school district. This is a contribution over and above the mandatory match of 101% of member contributions. That's going to be, going forward, be made by the actuary, the recommendation, as to what your contributions obligations are. I'll talk just real briefly about a major change with regard to how that recommendation and determination of what your contribution obligations will be. And finally, the legislation actually imposes specific record-keeping and data collection requirements upon the Board of Education and the school district relating to beneficial, or, sorry, member information, name, addresses, compensation histories, service records, and generally any appropriate or reasonable information that may be requested from time to time by the Board of Trustees that's necessary for actuarial valuation or necessary for the administration of the retirement system. Another change that's made, that's going to have a somewhat significant impact, is that the official custodian for the retirement system is changed from the school district, who's official custodian now, to the Nebraska State Treasurer. Starting in January 1 of 2017, the State Treasurer will now be the custodian, and the treasurer will be selecting the bank's safety deposit arrangements and custodial arrangements, and it's likely that there's going to be some major changes from what's in place now with regard to the custody of the assets of the retirement system. There is, however, a mechanism in place so that the handling of the actual pension payments now coming through the school district, that will still remain intact or can remain intact. The executive director will be able to provide directions for the treasurer to release funds to the school district to go ahead and continue to pay pension payments as we are currently doing. This will allow you to avoid having to change banking and payment arrangements that are in place for the payment of your pensions that are in pay status right now. As I alluded to earlier, a change that has a potential for a significant impact to your funding obligations is the addition of a specific definition of the term or meaning for the term solvency of the retirement system. Right now, the school district is required to contribute what it determines to be necessary to maintain the solvency of the retirement system. But what's of interest is that that definition of solvency has never been added to the statutes at all. The change made by LB 447 essentially has amended that term to incorporate actuarially required contribution requirements or standards, and that is what the actuary is going to be using to come up with the annual recommendations, you know, for the contributions that you'll have to make to the retirement system. The other changes that you should be aware of, there's going to be a new audit year for the retirement system. It'll change to a calendar year. That's the year that's used for actuarial evaluations, the year that's used for the annual financial audit. We'll have a short year from September 1 to December 31 this year. There's also a host of changes to the benefits for members who are first hired, or, more accurately, first become members on or after July 1 of this year. These changes are pretty much directed towards continually to try to align the benefits of our retirement system with those of the state school employees' retirement system. So what we have here, the fundamental changes are, we'll have early retirement, will change to age 60 with five years of service, as opposed to age 55 with 10 years of service. Unreduced retirement benefits will be payable at age 65, rather than age 62. There will be unreduced retirement benefits under a rule of 85, however, as they are now. The big change is that you would have to attain at least age 55 to qualify for that early unreduced retirement benefit under the rule of 85. And then finally, there's the repeal of the medical COLA, the cost-of-living adjustment that's available 10 years out to annuitants from the retirement system. And then there's the repeal of the state service annuity for members who come on board on or after July 1 of this year. The final, I guess, category of changes that should be aware of are the expenses for the retirement system. The bill now actually provides that all expenses that are incurred are provided by the school district to the retirement system for office accommodations, information management systems, support, furniture, equipment, all of which are provided, will be reimbursed to the school district from the retirement, from the retirement system. And the only thing that the school district will pretty much be still responsible for the cost of clerical work, for, you know, determining the maintenance of records and the payment of benefits. Thank you. As a side note, all expenses of the Nebraska Investment Council and the State Investment Officer, in connection with the transfer of the duties to invest and reinvest the assets of the plan, will be paid from the cash reserves of the retirement system without any approval by the Board of Trustees or the Board of Education. So I guess that's pretty much a quick overview of the major elements of the legislation and the impact upon the school district and the Board of Education. I'd be glad to entertain any questions you may have on any specific aspects of the legislation.
Mrs. Fay?
Well, first of all, I want to thank our legal team for guiding the trustees through the, and the board through this process. Gary and Megan, Neela Sprash and David Kramer, really, I think, worked very hard to navigate all of this with the retirement committee. And I also want to thank Mrs. Gotting, because I think you're the only one on this board who's been on trustees since you came on in 2013. Currently, Mr. Snow and I also serve with her on trustees, but Mr. Scanlon has, and Mr. Wayne, and not sure who else. But it's, it's another monthly meeting, and Luanne really took on the challenge of kind of paying very close attention to what was happening with the trustees and the retirement system and sort of spearheaded this, I think, this change. That's my take on it. But really, our legal team, just thank you, Gary, and Megan, and David, for helping through all of this, because it was a lot, and it took a couple of years to get it done, and it's a big change. This is a, this is a very big change. So I do have a question about, I'm going to call it the carcass of the trustees, it's probably not the right word, but it sort of works, between January, no, between July and January. So we won't, there won't be board members sitting on there, but the investments won't be taken over until, so you've got like a six-month period.
Right.
Right. So I guess I would just, I don't know if you have any thoughts about that, Luanne, but I think that probably we will need to pay very close attention to what's happening in that six-month period and what, most of the time, those investments just are given, they're on our consent agenda, and there's typically very little discussion about them, but this is going to be kind of a different six-month period while there aren't trust, board members sitting as trustees, but the investments haven't been taken over by the state.
One clear, and one clarification on this, too. Nothing changes in the sense that any investments that are, you know, requested or approved by the Board of Trustees still must be approved by the Board of Education up till January 1 of 2017.
Right. So that's exactly what I'm talking about. So those will still come before us, but we won't necessarily have had the opportunity to discuss them the way that we currently do at the monthly trustee meetings, so.
So I, just to respond a little bit to that, I think one of the things that we'll do on a go-forward basis now that Ms. Carter is here, is we'll have her reporting to us quarterly to give us an update, and that'll be an ongoing, I anticipate. But one of the other items that we'll be doing is meeting with the Nebraska Investment Council to plan for the transition, and I would anticipate, based on the legislation, that he will have some involvement and input into any potential new investment. So I think what I had read previously was if, if we still were, had a commitment to a particular fund and we were fulfilling that commitment, those transactions would be routine and continue to come before us. But any new investment and any new type of fund would need to have his blessing before it would happen between that July 1 and January 1 time period. So you're right, we will have to be very mindful during that period of time, but I think, I think there's going to be some processes that will be put into place, hopefully, and we'll have Ms. Carter bring that back to us, I would assume, maybe even in June, when, once we kind of are getting a sense for what the plan is, because we, the transition plan has to be formulated by July 1, correct?
Correct. In fact, we're meeting this week to begin the transition plan discussions, and I've already had conversation with the State Investment Officer, just to the point you brought up. So any new investments would have to be discussed with his staff as well. And I've already discussed an open funding that we haven't done yet, and he's on board with the manager that was chosen. The board chose them, I believe, in January, and they have not been funded yet. And so that funding will go through, and he's fine with that. So yes, we are in communication and monitoring.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Technically, there's actually in the legislation, a provision that says that the Board of Trustees nor the Board of Education can institute any rule or regulation regarding investments. So I don't know if that necessarily prevents you from, you know, selecting investments, but any rule or regulation or policy, I think, is you are not to adopt without the approval and input of the State Investment Officer.
And I just want to point out, I guess, to Mrs. Fay's point just a little bit ago, the decision to move the investments is a prudent one for not only the staff of Omaha Public Schools, but for the taxpayers as well. So I think, I think while the transition will be, there will be lots of work that needs to be done to ensure that it happens and that it's effective, I think it's the right decision, and I think we have a great executive director that has been hired and who has significant experience in the pension world. And so I think that, just to keep everybody calm, that it's a, it's a good prudent decision to do this, and, and I think the decisions made going forward will be wise for the retirees. Mr. Scanlon?
I've been harping on the unfunded liability for a number of years now, I guess. Could you speak to that as far as what OPS and the taxpayers of OPS, what their obligations are as we move into this transition? And I guess if there are future unfunded liabilities, how does that, or who does that fall upon?
Yeah. The future unfunded liabilities, and it goes to the change in this definition of solvency that I mentioned, it's in the LB 447. The amount that's going to be essentially at front and center for contribution is going to be actuarially determined, which is, you know, based upon what your funding status is. Now, I'm not an actuary by any means, so I can't give you the technical details, but essentially what is done is that it'll be actuarially determined each year as to what contribution, total contribution should be made to the retirement system. And keep in mind, you've got money coming in from the state of Nebraska, you've got your members' contributions from, you know, their mandatory contributions, and you have the matching contribution that has to be put in by the school district, which is 101% of the employees. The question is, is how much, if any, additional contribution over and above that would have to be contributed in order, and I'm oversimplifying here, but to keep the, the retirement system actuarially solvent. And the actuary will come up and say that there should or should not, you know, there needs to be an additional contribution of X, based upon the actuarial assumptions for this year, based upon the time periods and frames, the framework that they have to make that determination, and the assumptions that are specified in the statutes for that purpose. But that is how the unfunded liability could show up and could increase your funding obligations, or at least the recommendations you're going to be receiving from the actuary. It'll still be up to the board to, you know, make the decision, but you'll be presented with the recommendation based upon the actuary's recommendations that are predicated upon these new actuarially required contributions that are embodied in this definition of solvency.
I guess, obviously, right now, we're dealing with an unfunded liability. At any point in time, as we go year to year, if we are overfunded, how does that work? Does the pension give money back to OPS, or does that, does that just kind of a rolling tab that next year, if there's an underfunded liability?
Yeah, each year, yeah, each year should stand on its own, and in a particular year, you would have maybe surplus funding. That would mean that there would be no additional contributions that would be required of the school district whatsoever to the plan. Again, it doesn't get you off the obligation to make that matching contribution. 101% of the members' contributions has to go in by law, but it's a question of how much over and above that, and if you have a surplus, there would be no requirement to make a contribution for that year.
And I think, I think it's based on, it's a 30-year time period, correct? If you look out, it's what's out 30 years. Is that correct? Is that how the actuary?
Yeah, each year, what they'll do is they'll determine how, you have a funding shortfall, but it's to be amortized over a 30-year period. And they do that each and every year. I think Don Jones, the Board of Trustees, who's an actuary, I think he termed it as stacking. What you do is each year stands by itself, but they kind of stack on top of each other. So you don't necessarily get credit for prior funding for prior year, but that will all enter into the mix in determining the next year's, you know, contribution requirements based upon these actuarial principles.
And I think one of the other things that I heard when I was in Lincoln, one of the legislative sessions, was, for instance, the Nebraska Fund for Teachers is currently, you know, eighty-some percent. So their comment was, once, once you hit that 100 or 110% funded, then it may change what what the contribution level is, both from the district standpoint and from the teacher themselves. So that's, that's kind of how you get to the place where, you know, it's a hopeful time that you would ever get to that place where you'd actually be at 100% funded. But that's the goal, is to get to that funding level where potentially the contributions both from, whether it be a district or the teachers are less.
Of course, the earnings of the retirement system are really crucial too.
Right. Mrs. Underwood.
I have a quick question. Could you explain, not being one of the board members that was serving on the OSERS board and just, I really appreciate this update because I'm just not, not being kind of involved in this on a monthly basis and maybe just not as up to speed on, on everything else as some of the other board members who do serve on the OSERS board. So this might seem like kind of a silly question, but who exactly is the Nebraska Investment Council and who are they made up of?
Yeah, Nebraska Investment, I wish I'd consulted the statutes. The Nebraska Investment Council is actually a creature of Nebraska statute. It's created, there's appointments to that position by the governor and I can't remember if anyone else is, but they actually, do you know exactly the makeup? I'm going to yield the floor here.
The Nebraska Investment Council is made up of, I believe it's four appointees, gubernatorial appointees, the state treasurer, the director of the state retirement system, and then January 1, I'm appointed onto that board as well. So I'll be there to oversee our investments as well.
Although as a non-voting member.
As a non-voting member, correct. And the, the director for the state plan is a non-voting member as well.
And then the Nebraska Investment Council is charged, right now they are essentially serving the same role with regard to the state retirement systems, although essentially are controlling the, you know, direction of the investments. And that's carried out through the state investment officer, which is actually under the purview of the Nebraska Investment Council. But that's who really will be primarily interacting with, with our retirement system. But the Nebraska Investment Council will be setting the goals and directions for the investment of the retirement system assets going forward and of course it'll be executed and carried out with the state investment officer.
And just to maybe further clarify that a little bit, the state investment officer has a whole team that works under him who may be specialists related to bond, bonds, maybe specialists related to equities, mutual funds. So he has a team of people that are actually working on those investments and they, just like us, we have NEPC, they also have an outside consultant that is providing information to them and direction on funding and their asset liability study and everything else. So it's, it's a whole group of individuals that are, have expertise in investing and then another group that is appointed or in the state treasurer's case or in some of the other individuals who are there, are appointed to oversee and ensure that they're following through on, on what their task to do. So I don't know if that helps a little bit too?
Now I have the precise answer now. It's, the council consists of five members appointed by the governor with the approval of the legislature. And then they're standing as, in addition to that then, the state treasurer, the director of the Nebraska Public Employees Retirement System, and then as Celia noted, the, your administrator for your retirement system will also be a non-voting member of that Nebraska Investment Council.
Great. Thank you for clearing that up.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Great. Thank you so much for explaining that to us. It's a, it's a big item for our employees, so we want to make sure we're clear.
Okay, with that, we are going to move on to J1B Elementary Writing Grammar Adoption K5.
We're excited to have Donna Dobson and Canyon Chisholm present this. Our Director of Elementary Education, as well as Canyon, who is our coordinator, who works in elementary education as well. We'll talk about our district requested adopted resource, specifically writing and grammar. That's a teacher's manual, student workbook, and then also to support that would be a keyboarding adoption, edgy type, which you'll hear about, which allows for writing to occur on keyboards. So with that, we'll reference that the writing materials are behind you on the south wall and will be in the workroom for two weeks for your review if you'd like to look at them more closely. And they've put together a very short eight slide PowerPoint, but they have a more extensive listing of information, teachers and staff involved in the board report that's also attached.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Evans. We're excited to be here tonight to talk about the writing and grammar proposed adoption. We had over 70 teachers review materials from several publishers and they narrowed the publishers down to two. In addition, we had dual language staff review and field test two resources that were both in English and Spanish. The field testing of the resources was conducted this school year about a semester-long project and the teachers voted and they are recommending Being a Writer to be considered for adoption. The Department of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment will be requesting approval at the May 2 board meeting to purchase the instructional materials. Now, identified need, the Omaha Public Schools teachers and students will be provided a consistent district-wide resource to support writing and grammar instruction for students in grades K through 5. Our teachers have been asking for a grammar teacher's manual and a student workbook to provide explicit grammar instruction. The proposed resource, Being a Writer, supports both writing and grammar needs. We have, let's see, Canyon has it here. In Being a Writer, the grammar component is referred to as skills practice. So if you see that, that means grammar. And you see there is a manual as well as a student workbook for students' grades, first grade through fifth grade. Kindergarten focuses mostly on capitalization and punctuation, so they don't have a workbook that goes with theirs. In addition, OPS adopted the Nebraska State English Language Arts Standards, which requires students as early as third grade to construct and be scored on typing responses. So a district-wide keyboarding program with interactive lessons that reinforces touch typing would help our students prepare for the new requirements that we're looking at. This slide just shows how we align with the strategic plan, high expectations, rigorous, guaranteed viable curriculum, meaningful and engaging content, technology. And our stakeholder groups. These included K through 5 classroom resource and dual language teachers in the process of review and selection, and teachers will continue to be involved with curriculum development as we move forward with a new district resource. We had representatives from local colleges, the Omaha Education Association, the OPS Office of Equity and Diversity, OPS Information Management, they're all involved in the review and selection of resources as well as OPS parents. We, in addition, we had even more people. We had representatives from the OPS ESL Department, the Office of Equity and Diversity, again, the Office of Native American Indian Education, ESU 19, Dual Language, Library Services, Secondary Education, and Elementary Education went in and reviewed all of the mentor texts. And the mentor texts are the authentic pieces of literature that we use as models so that teachers have models to show students of good writing and, and it's part of, an important part of the instruction. And so they did a review looking for stereotyping and bias, so we added that to our process.
So you can see here the funds that we are seeking approval for on May 2, the fiscal And just to tell you a little bit about our considerations that we took into place for dual language. Our dual language teachers evaluated and field tested resources and then they met to come together and discuss their options. And at the end, they voted to recommend Being a Writer for their program as well, for the Spanish side and the English side. The teachers really felt like this would provide a consistent district curriculum resource, professional development and collaboration within and amongst schools by using the same program. Being a Writer does have some Spanish mentor texts, which you can see there on the screen in the Spanish language. We are also hoping to further support our Spanish side dual language classrooms with additional Spanish mentor texts as well as some adaptation and translation of the English materials that they can use in their classroom, beginning, doing some of that work this summer into the upcoming school year. Y'all be see, what you can also see on that slide is the grammar resource that the Spanish side teachers voted to recommend for their grammar instruction. That grammar resource, y'all be see, comes with a teacher's manual and it also comes with a student workbook for grades 1 through 5. Just some additional grammar considerations for the English side of dual language as well as all traditional classrooms in the district. Grammar usage and mechanics are included in the daily lessons of Being a Writer. So in the core resource, which is the teacher's manual, grammar is embedded into the daily lessons as well as, and I just said it back there, so maybe you can be super fast, as and teachers will also use the grammar skills workbook, which comes with a teacher's manual and a student workbook to provide direct explicit instruction in grammar. And again, every student will have a workbook for that. Our next steps pending board approval on May 2 would include working with district operational services to purchase and distribute the materials to all of the buildings, working on pacing guides and the Spanish mentor text alignments here, and then also working with Being a Writer to provide teacher training at the August Curriculum Day and following that full implementation in classrooms in the fall of 2016. The resources are here, we'll have them here for two weeks and now we'd like to just take any questions that you might have.
Mrs. Faye.
Thank you. Thank you for eight slides. Eight very informative, well-done slides. Going back to the fiscal impact, what, how long do we expect to use this curriculum? And then what on here is a consumable and will need to be replaced every year? And do you know the, how much that'll cost?
So the, let me go back to that slide. The fiscal impact listed here is for seven years of materials.
Oh, okay.
So the students will have the consumable grammar workbook, which is already figured into that cost for each year.
Great. And it's the similar, it's a similar process to our math workbooks. We just replace them each year and that's part of all of this. So, and is seven years, is that about, is that about how long we expect to use? Right. That's part of our cycle. Yeah, cycle, thank you. Good, thank you.
Well, I am so excited. As you all know, I've been a writing grammar person for quite a while and it's probably been, I don't know, almost a decade that I've been seeking for that in the district. So this is really exciting to me. I also had incredible feedback over the weekend on the keyboarding resources. There are some folks that are very concerned about the field tests that took place and are taking place here in our elementary schools, getting ready for next year's NISA testing. And so whether I've been sitting at ballgames or talking to friends who are teachers, that's the thing I've heard the most, is the concern about third graders, fourth graders being able to type sentence responses and not take half of a day to pluck it all out. And so, so I've gotten really positive feedback that we've included that and so I want to thank you for doing that. I wasn't aware that that was going to be a part of it and so I really appreciate that. But I very much appreciate this. I'm just very excited about that. I'm looking forward to our writing scores improving, but I'm also looking forward to, as our students move into middle school, being more aware of some of those grammar questions. I think when I'm at academic competitions, our kids can answer math and reading and music and art questions, but sometimes they can't tell us parts of speech. So I'm looking forward to this as well. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Ms. Merrick.
I just have a couple of quick questions. So, I'm trying to figure out how to word this very nicely, I apologize in advance. Curriculum days are August 10th, 11th and 12th, and then there's the other curriculum day in September. And school starts on August 17th or 18th if you're in the upper high school grades. Is this a substantial difference from how we're teaching writing now and is that enough time for our teachers to actually have enough time to prepare and go over the curriculum and be able to teach it that first couple of weeks of school? Because I know when we've changed curriculum and changed materials in the past, sometimes it's not gotten through all the way at that first curriculum day and on September 16th, we have teachers learning what they should have been teaching a couple of weeks before that.
Well, I'll start and Canyon, you can jump in. We will, our intention is to share this at the first curriculum days in August and what the feedback we got from teachers was this aligns with Writer's Workshop, which is our framework. And so what this does, I believe it will give them more support in the resources, the mentor texts, all the pieces that they will need to implement it. We have focused on Writer's Workshop the last couple of years and so this should slip right in.
Yeah, I was going to just say that. But to just put an exclamation point on that, it's really great because, especially this last year, we actually did really focused work with, in Writer's Workshop with principals, instructional facilitators at the elementary, helping them get in there and make this Writer's Workshop happen at their building. But now they're going to have a resource that aligns directly with that, so they have the structure in place and now they have the resource to help push them forward with that. So, and we've already, well, seen some improvement, I don't know if I should.
You can't say that. We're excited about the scores.
I'm really excited about it.
The scores are coming. So anyway, what I, what I was going to add to that was I, we each facilitated a small group and the difference in conversation of the teachers in the small group that I facilitated and their expertise on Writer's Workshop, they were very analytical and critical and they knew what they were looking for in a resource. So that, that's some more of the reasons why I feel confident that it will be a good start.
How can, can I say this? I talked to a teacher who piloted and, and she's a good writing teacher, but she said while the, her students' abilities went from here to way up to here just in the piloting of having a resource that was available. And I think part of that is with high mobility and not having a consistent framework across the entire district, that was part of the challenge before. So that's some of the feedback I've heard from those who piloted any number of the different programs that we looked at. Mr. Wayne.
I appreciate the presentation and I agree with Mrs. Faye. I liked the short, concise information, really helpful. I'm looking more at the Spanish dual language resources. I'm assuming we're using these resources because it'll close the achievement gap and help our students learn in a higher quality manner. And I just want to raise this to the board's attention. This is an example of, in our strategic plan, we talk about equity. Dual language program is going to get an additional half a million dollars, but there's not a dual language program in North Omaha. So this half a million is going to go everywhere else but to North Omaha. I just want to point that out, that as we continue to have dialogue about the next dual language program, this is an example where it's not being equitable across the district and where kids in North Omaha still don't have the same resources as other kids.
Ms. Williams.
Which is a great point and I think that's one of the most crucial aspects of the specialty school review and recommendation committee is looking at how to get more equitable programs across the board. So I just want to reiterate, being on that committee, that's something that we are very much, I'm talking with. I know Ms. Kenoke is very much looking at dollars as well, so I don't want the public to think this is not something that the district is looking at. It most definitely is. It's how do we align that with the amount of academies and magnet dollars that we have flowing also in North Omaha that's not being equitable on South Omaha? And so we're really looking at how to make those dollars for our entire district, do what they need to do and that's impact student achievement.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Evans.
Just to note, just to note, I know we'll have some workshops in the near future where we talk about the considerable investment we're making in North Omaha, whether it's a school improvement grant at Wakanda, the partnership school at Kennedy, the priority school at Druid Hill, and what you'll see is actually it's a heck of a lot more than that 500,000. So, and we should, because we're using data to drive how we distribute resources and equals not equitable. resources and equals not equitable. And we all know that. So we do have a workshop coming up on those to give the board some updates, but I think you'll find that the resource concentration, and it's been very purposeful on the district's part, to make sure we are applying resources, specifically if we have some, what the state identifies as PLOS schools, which several of them are in North Omaha, but we'll be going over that with the board to give you a better perspective, much broader perspective than just this one item.
Mr. Scanlon.
I guess I'd just like to kind of add on to that, that, you know, I think this board, we need to understand, and as a district, what our definition of equitable resources are, because there's early childhood programs that are offered in different parts of our district that are not offered, you know, west of 72nd Street, and you could say that's inequitable. But I don't think that's the case. I think that we need to make sure that we do a very thorough analysis of what programs will benefit us in different parts of the town, different parts of our district, based off of language barriers, based off of poverty. So I don't think that we can say, well, this isn't necessarily in this area of the district and that deems it inequitable. I think we need to be very thoughtful and to realize, you know, what different programs will benefit us the most in different areas. And, you know, I, I understand that dual language, you know, it brings some, some benefits to, to those students that are participating in it. But again, early childhood development, I think that's, you know, that's very strong in, in North Omaha and South Omaha where it's not in other areas of our district. So I don't think that just because a program is not offered in certain areas that we can just throw out that it's inequitable. So I think that we need to have that discussion as a board to find out what programs benefit our students district-wide.
Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, President Gadding. You know, I echo some of what Ms. Fay mentioned and Mr. Wayne in particular, just on the format. I also really appreciate the fact that there were many people that were engaged in this, stakeholders at all different levels, not only teachers but individuals at different departments, and that the OEA and other members were engaged in this process. Were any other, no, no, I was looking at the list for, for these individuals, paraprofessionals, other support staff engaged in this?
The paraprofessionals would have been involved at the field test level in the classrooms because they worked so closely with the teachers. So that, that would be, they didn't specifically come to the big events.
Okay. Maybe, I would think it'd be really helpful to try to get that voice more so in the future. I only say it because I think teachers that work with paraprofessionals on a daily level would, would recognize that their voice and the work that they do on a daily level is, they have a lot of insight in terms of how things are really applied. And I think that was, that's a good voice to include here. And I'll echo a little bit what Mr. Wayne said, just specifically, I'm really happy to see the Spanish language, the dual language component here, that that was part of the evaluation. And I do think that there's a bridge between the two things that, you know, Mr. Wayne and Mr. Scanlon are talking about, where we're not talking about equality and having every single program accessible and everywhere, but equity, trying to find which programs that are going to help close the achievement gap for specific populations that are in high poverty, high need. And that's the conversation I think we're trying to have, just trying to build the bridge between the two comments.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the very short presentation. I greatly appreciate it.
A central running theme.
I think you get a red, golden award for that, I guess.
Take it.
I wanted to, just real quick, Dr. Suenz and May Berger, who's probably not here, she's usually at every board meeting. Dual Language Department just recently had some meetings with Gifford Park and the people that, the families that live in Bemis Neighborhood Association, and the objective is, how do you get more dual language on the north side of Dodge? How do we get a lot of the families? I know we had a board meeting a couple of weeks ago, some of the Latino families from North Omaha, talking about having more dual language opportunities in North Omaha. And I would have to say on the ground level, with that neighborhood meeting, that people are ready for it, and it's just a matter of time until we can align everything to really build a facility to accommodate those families. So I feel that we are moving the needle on that ground, we just gotta move a little harder. So, thank you.
Okay, we'll let the SSRR committee work on that, and thank you so much for, for the presentation. With that, we're going to move on to J1C, Human Growth and Development updates.
We'd like to invite Chris Denton. She'll be presenting Human Growth and Development. She has a challenge. The last group did their presentation in 10 minutes, so we'll see if we can meet that expectation. She'll be talking from the board report. She'll go over curriculum input sessions for families, parents, and community members, as well as teacher and nurse curriculum input sessions. She'll cover the textbook and materials selected for field testing, the training for our field test teachers and nurses, which schools participated, and our next steps.
Good evening. I think I can beat the 10-minute mark. We had four family and community curriculum review nights that were held at Burke, South, Northwest, and North High School for the purpose of providing feedback using scoring guides of the potential textbooks and teaching materials for grades four through eight and 10. Approximately 20 to 25 individuals attended each night, with many of the same community individuals returning multiple times to review these materials. In addition, teachers and nurses that teach Human Growth and Development use the scoring guides to review and provide feedback on the materials. Teachers and nurses either attended the scheduled night just for them, or they came during one of our family community nights as well. Or they reviewed it on their own time and then sent in the scoring guides afterwards. The research division then processed the Scantron scoring guides and written feedback to tabulate the responses of the reviewed textbooks and materials. Based on these results, teachers and nurses received training from each of the publishers on the materials that we selected on March 24th. And going forth for the field testing, all of the parents were sent home new permission slips. We sent them home the new opt-out and opt-in forms so that they could see all the new standards that would be covered. So even if they had already signed a permission slip, they signed a new permission slip for the field testing. And the materials, if I can scroll here, that we selected for grades four through six include the, the Great Body Shop and Health World. Health World being an online platform that has some really great videos, and then the Great Body Shop being kind of a textbook material, if you remember the Weekly Reader where you get the little magazines, that's kind of the format that they deliver the curriculum in. And then for seventh and eighth grade, we're looking at Teen Smart, or Teen Health and Health Smart as the, the core resources. And then the selected lessons from the Rights, Respect, and Responsibilities curriculum were, are being field tested as a supplemental-type resource. 10th grade, we're looking at the Human Biology and Human Sexuality, and then the Health Smart materials again, and then the same for the Rights, Respect, and Responsibility as a supplemental resource. And, kind of going forward, we'll talk about what schools we're looking at for, that are completing their field testing this week, they'll finish up on Friday. We tried to get a nice cross-section of our district from all corners of the city, so to speak, and then we have a few of our high schools and then middle schools. We made sure that not only do we have nurses doing the field testing and then the regular health teachers, but specifically, we made sure to include physical education teachers who, at our middle schools, are often charged with teaching the human growth curriculum. So we made sure to keep them involved. And then just going forward, this Friday, the field testing is going to conclude. We'll have a meeting with the, the folks that did the field testing. They'll present to the rest of the nurses and teachers on April 26th, where they will then all vote for what materials we'd like to then present to the board for consideration on May 2nd. And then kind of, again, moving forward, similar to the, the writing team, we'll be doing some curriculum training at our curriculum days in August and September, with continued professional development for our nurses and teachers, as needed at the building site level as we continue to partner with our community partners, sorry.
Okay, Ms. Williams.
This is probably not directed towards you, maybe Dr. Cooper can help me with this. I recall at a previous board meeting that I, I know, I specifically asked to have this conversation prior to field testing. And although I don't agree with a lot of what Mr. Dockery believes, I do believe that we should have had, we, it was our due diligence to have this conversation prior to testing. I just feel as if we've kind of dropped the ball a little bit here with this issue. This is a very high-energy, very hot-topic conversation, and I believe that as, as the board, we really wanted to be as transparent as possible, and I, I just honestly feel that we dropped the ball in this one, having this conversation now, as opposed to having this conversation prior to testing so that we knew which schools, when testing would begin. And so that, I, I just really wanted to make that known. Again, we're still having issue, and we're still hearing something in the community. Mr. Dockery isn't the only one, there's several others. And, and so I really want us to truly do what we said as, as a board and as a district that we were going to listen to, kind of that input. So I just, I want that to go on record, and I hope that as we're moving forward in this, we're really thinking about not just the timeline, but really, truly what's best, so that we can all be better aware, because the conversations that I've had really were, again, this was something the district has already made their mind up of, this is the curriculum they wanted to use, and, and so how can, as a board member, how can I defend that when I am not aware of that information myself? So I just hope that we continue to really think about those transparency issues as we're conducting this business with our community.
Mrs. Fay.
So I just want to be sure I understand, is your concern that we didn't know, we didn't know what schools were, the field testing was going to happen at prior?
What I originally asked is that before we started field testing, and you can go back and look at one of the previous board meetings, but I did ask for this conversation to happen prior to field testing.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to focus in on what this conversation is, because there's a lot of stuff in this presentation that we did have prior to. So I'm talking about, are you trying to?
More so the actual curriculum themselves, the, the actual curriculum, and I think all of this is important.
The actual curriculum that was going to be field tested, and which schools, because I feel like we got this, I feel like we got it as an informa, or as a, and then...
From, from my knowledge, and I asked, but for me, this was something. We didn't get the presentation, but again, my whole point is a public conversation about it.
Sure, I have a question, but I'll let Renee.
I think you're actually both right. We provided you the full list of everything, of everything that was being reviewed, that was possible options for field testing. I think, so you did see everything that was possible, as did the community, but I think what you're saying is, you would have liked to have known what the community input selected to be field tested in advance of the field test starting. And I, I completely missed that. I will tell you, I didn't know that request was made, or we would have done it differently. Not saying you didn't make it, saying that I missed that piece of information during an earlier presentation.
So my question is, back to the authority of action, the involved and supportive community partners, do we have that aligned network that's listed in there, governmental agencies, nonprofit providers, et cetera? Do we have that put together yet, or is that, and who's on that list, if you do?
I think I would say we probably have both, because we have some resources that are already, already available in schools that they know who to reach out for student and, like, student support, but as far as it being infused in what the Human Growth and Development curriculum, that has yet to be officially developed. That's what we're doing going forward in our work with the development of like the pacing guides and things like that. We'll be able to list what community organizations that we have as a district approved to come in and support and do different things with the, with students or with the curriculum.
That would probably be another good thing for us to see prior to it being implemented in the curriculum, is to see that list and how that's going to be worked into the curriculum. So, thank you.
And I think how parents would be included or informed about the different groups that might be coming in, or how that, how that communication happens. And I'm curious, as we move forward, even prior to adoption, how we'll communicate with parents on whether or not, if there's videos to watch, what, where they'll be able to access those, how we'll communicate that information to them? And, and how we'll give them information on what the various lessons are and what's going to be taught specifically during that week, or, because they have the choice of leaving their child in class for the whole time or pulling them out of certain classes. So I just, I think I want to understand how that communication piece happens, so that if someone says, oh, I want to talk about that at home and not have my child be part of that class, that that's fine, but that we've communicated that well.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Oh, Ms. Merrick.
Same question as before, because again, this is a big change in our curriculum. I'm guessing, maybe you do, maybe you don't, have much teacher feedback from the pilots yet, since you're having the meeting to talk about how things have gone on April 26th? If we haven't gotten feedback, if we can get some at that meeting about whether or not they think that is enough time to get the information on the 11th and 12th, and in some cases, some teachers are going to have longer to prepare, just depending on when the class is offered, but we're going to have some teachers that are going to start teaching that on August 19th.
And I guess I have one other question on that, related to, clearly if it's at the elementary level and it's the four or five lessons that the nurses are teaching, they probably weren't able to get through this in the field testing time, but I'd be curious to know what the feedback is from staff at the upper levels, where it's typically a semester-long class, if they felt like they could actually take a good look at the material during that field test time and, and feel comfortable with giving a recommendation.
Okay. Okay, are there any other questions on that? All right, great. If not, thank you very much, and we will stay tuned for the next board meeting. All right. With that, we are going to move on to, and Mrs. Fay, would you be okay if I move schematic design approval JP Lord first? I just know that we've got quite a few outside folks here, and I don't want to leave them here for a lengthy legislative discussion, so we will move J2B ahead of J2A schematic design approval for the 2014 Bond Program, JP Lord School. And as they're coming forward, I found a little history that I thought was interesting. The JP Lord School was actually started in 1938 and was a very innovative school at that time nationally, and I'm, I'm just really pleased that OPS was a leader in innovation. So anyway, I thought that was very interesting, 1938, that's a long time ago. All right, Mr. Summers.
Well, thank you. You can see we got quite a group, I think they're going to take 10 minutes each, so that way we can, we can make sure we're, we're here for the evening. No, thank you tonight for letting us present on JP Lord. I think everybody knows it's a unique and special facility inside of OPS. I'm just going to do a brief introduction. We have the JP Lord principal here, Laura McHolmes. She's going to say a few words about the students and the programming inside of the building, inside of the facility. We also have a parent and teacher that's going to share some of their perspective on the process that they have gone through over the last several months. And then finally, we have Pat Carson, who's the architect of record for the facility, that's going to walk through a PowerPoint here, a few slides of the actual schematic design, and then of course, we can answer any questions that you folks might have about the process or about the actual design. Laura?
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, and I'm glad to be here tonight, and thank you, President Gadding and members of the board. I, I've discussed, I am Laura McHolmes, and I am the principal, and I'm going to say the blessed principal at JP Lord. Dr. JP Lord School is located on the medical, the UNMC Medical Center's campus at 33, excuse me, 330 South 44th Street, and it's been there since 1956. And before it was there, it occupied one room at Field Club School. So we've been there... So, we've been there since 1956, so I tell you, we have quite the history there. Our school's a self-contained school, serving the most medically fragile students in our district. Our student population ranges from in age, from five to 21 years of age. Our students attend our school, they have, they have severe and profound mentally, their mental retardation, as well as other disabilities such as deaf, blindness, low vision, hearing loss, speech difficulties or no speech, and a multitude of other impairments. JP Lord School students come from all over the school district, as well as we contract through with other districts around Omaha. Our students engage in a variety of activities during the school day. Our main focus areas are literacy, math, science, and social studies. And, and these instructional activities are embedded our focus areas, which are communication skills, motor skills, and life skills. All students have IEP goals, and they clearly align with JP Lord School's improvement plan. We have a very dedicated staff who care for our students' learning and their well-being. We have eight teachers, 24 paraprofessionals, two nurses, and adaptive arts specialist, an adaptive PE teacher, a librarian, two physical therapists, two occupational therapists, a music therapist, and me, the principal. Our new building will enhance our staff's ability to work with children and teach our students in so many more ways. There'll be more areas for stimulation and communication with differentiated instruction. This building also will offer a venue for other ACP students in our district to come and enjoy the neat, the unique and stimulating program in our new building. We're gonna have a sensory gym and a big stage that we can host productions, sensory spaces, and this is one of the most exciting things, we're gonna have a therapy pool for our children. We have a wonderful donation of $375,000 by a wonderful volunteer group, the Omaha Volunteers of Handicapped Children. If I can get a shout-out to Dr. Galusha, is here. Thank you, Dr. Galusha. Who also has a very long and distinguished history with our Omaha Public Schools. We thank him for coming, and thank you for his spearheading with these individuals. Also, in this volunteer group is Joe McCartney, Barb Hopkins, and Patty Kelling. So, along with Dr. Galusha, they still are doing wonderful, wonderful things for children. I have already begun working with Principal Dr. David Alati at Norris Junior High, in wanting to get his students involved in some community service time with our students. And also, I'm going to be contacting other schools as well, because I think this is important. I am also currently working with Y-Arts, Carolyn Anderson, and we are putting together some dramatic arts that would offer a wonderful, special theater experience venue for other ACP students in our district. A field trip to see one of these dramatic performances put on by Y-Arts would just be awesome. This would actually be a theater production meant for youngsters who oftentimes, they go along with other peers, you know, they go along with their classrooms, or go along with their mainstream classrooms, which is wonderful and good. But this really would be the venue that would just really speak to them, and that's what I'm so excited about. It's so important to me that our students get the most out of their school years, they are my passion. Maybe our students won't be doctors or teachers or therapists, but they will be the inspiration for all of them. And our mission with the Omaha Public Schools is every student, every day, prepared for success. Well, JP Lord, we are every student, every day, prepared for access. Thank you. I would like to introduce one of our parents, Mrs. Teresa Peterson. She has a lovely, lovely young lady, Heather, that attends JP Lord, and she would like to share with you a few things.
Thank you. Hello, as mentioned, I'm Teresa Peterson. Our daughter is Heather. I thought there's no better way to understand the kids there than to see the face of them. Our daughter Heather just turned 17, she's been a student there since first grade. It has been a remarkably positive experience. It has been such a perfect fit for her needs. And I understand that every family, every child with any type of special need has a different set of requirements. But in our daughter's case, this, this setting is perfect. And I, I look at it, and sometimes I think, I wish everybody that had a child with special needs had a situation like this. I would truly be my hope to see other schools in the country, and certainly I'm not familiar with, you know, many, but I would love to see other schools pattern themselves after JP Lord. The facility that they've used for the last however many years that was, 50 years or so, it's been wonderful. I mean, there's many, you know, good aspects about it, but the new facility will be truly groundbreaking, I think. And, but as great as the facility is, I have to say, it's really the, the teachers, the support staff, the principal, everybody at that school. I always tell my friends, acquaintances, if, I always offer to have them come down there with me just to visit, because I say, if you go down there and you, you just sit there or stand there for 15 minutes, on any morning of the week, you'll see every single staff person greet every student that comes in. There's a, they're like a flock, and they surround them, and they bring them to their little place that they're gonna work that day, and the kids love it. And the reason I'm saying this, too, is because in a traditional school, that would not be possible. And what may seem to some people as, I don't know, like, a special treatment to some extent, it's a necessity. And the kids there, I understand with certain special needs, they can be mainstream, and that's appropriate, but I really, I really think the level of need with each of those students is best met in that environment. There's just certain things they could never do in a traditional school that they're able to do at JP Lord. They're able to raise a ruckus in the hall, they can raise a ruckus in the gym, they can do whatever they need to do, the cafeteria is geared towards them. It is truly the most inspiring place there is. And I say that as a former teacher myself, but I was a high school science teacher, a science nerd, and I don't have what it takes to be a special ed teacher, so I have the greatest appreciation for them. It's a great place, and I'm just glad to know that it's gonna continue, you know, with, with this new building, and with the staff. It's the staff that is amazing there, so. The district has met our daughter's needs exceptionally, and I don't know that that's, you know, everybody's situation in other districts, but I just know that in this regard, her needs have been met very, very well. So, thank you. Thank you so much for listening.
And now we have Mr. Joe Gregory, he is our adaptive art specialist.
Good evening, madam, and Mr. Evans, and the board. I just wanted to let you know, this is really a unique opportunity. And I'm not just saying that. John Steinbeck had a quote, and he said, "I wonder how often I look at people, but I really don't see them." And we are trying to gain visibility as a school. There are even some times when people don't know within the district that we're in JP Lord School. So, we went, I was on the committee here, and we started looking at schools, wow, we could find like, the, the school for the deaf, or, or school for the blind, or, you know, individual. But a school that would encompass the whole need of multi-abilities that these kids have, we were unique. I started to look, there was a couple of places in England, and, you know, wow. So we have an opportunity to really make this a unique situation for these students, and a destination for Omaha, that we can really make a difference in the lives of these kids. And that's what I want to say. I want to thank the board, too, for their support of the arts, because one of my students, Espinoza, she had a billboard, we're gonna have the reception here in about a week. So, these kids are getting opportunities that they might not have in other situations. So I commend you for all your work, and we appreciate what you do for us. Thank you.
I'm Pat Carson with BCD and Architects, and I've had the pleasure of working with all the people that have spoken before me here tonight, and they've said what I need to say in a much better way than I could ever say it. So, let me just show you a few images that show you some of what we've talked about over these several months. The images that you see currently are images of the existing facility. As Laura mentioned, I believe the original function of this facility on the Med Center campus was a polio treatment facility, which does not mesh well with how they're using it. So, the fact that Laura and her team have been able to develop the sort of curriculum that they have within this building is really amazing. You can see the, the amount of, or I should say, the lack of storage space. A lot of these children need four to five pieces of equipment throughout a day that needs to be transitioned. So you see a lot of that is out in the corridor spaces. They are maximizing every square inch they have down there, so. To give you a sense here of where we're coming from and where we're going, the existing JP Lord site, as we mentioned, is on the Med Center campus there at 45th and Farnham. If we go about two miles south on 45th Street, just south of Center Street, is the new location, which, as Laura mentioned, is just north of Norris Middle School. So you'll see Norris there to the south. The site is currently an undeveloped, about 10-acre site. Plenty of space for a 45,000-square-foot building, it's a single-story building. You can see there's parking and drop-off on the east and south sides of the building. There are about 18 buses that currently shuttle students to and from this facility. One of the things in this design is we're creating a rain canopy, which they struggle with now when we have inclement weather, so that as they're taking the children in and out of the facility, they're able to protect them. To the north of the facility, there's an exterior instruction and play area, and you can see quite a bit of green space as well. The floor plan of the facility is fairly simple. The two diagonal wings that you see at 45-degree angles are the classroom wings. There are a total of eight classrooms, four in each wing. There'll be eight students in each classroom, so it's about 64 students that'll utilize this facility. The facility includes all the things you would normally inspect in a normal elementary school, plus a lot of specialized spaces, obviously, for their program. Within the classroom areas, we'll look at a blow-up here in just a second, but we do have, about half of the classroom spaces are designed as storm-safe areas, so that when they have an event, they don't have to shuttle the children long distances in the building, obviously because of some of the physical limitations they have, that would be an issue for them. The lower area of the building is where we enter, it's where the office is, the therapy pool that we'll talk about. And then throughout the corridor system, we've talked quite a bit with the EdSpec Committee about sensory spaces, and so we'll talk about that here for just a quick minute, too, but we really think that the sensory space is something that's gonna be unique to this new facility, that they're not able to do within the limits of their current building. This is a blow-up of one of the typical classroom suites. And what we're showing here, there'd be two, two areas, two classroom spaces with a shared center storage area, some of the improvements that we have here versus the current building. We have a lot more space, the actual classroom spaces are big enough that they can have two or three unique activities happening within a single classroom. They can't do that now with the space they have. We'll have a lot of additional devices for them, like hoarder lifts, so that we can get children up out of their, out of their chairs and onto the physical therapy tables and other areas of the building. Each classroom would have its own student toilet area, as well as each suite would have its own staff toilets as well, so that it could be more independent within the school Some of the sensory elements, this just gives you a feel of some of those devices. There's been a lot of technology developed in the last 10 years to stimulate senses, and so you see a lot of bubble tubes, LED ropes, and just general technology pieces that allow students to interact. So these would be located in corridor areas, there'd also be specialized classroom spaces where you could come with a, a group of children and, and have an event inside those sensory spaces. We also touched on briefly the therapy pool. This is an image of, of that therapy pool. The thing that's really unique about it is that it would have a floor that can be lowered or raised, so that you don't have to transition the students out of wheelchairs, through lifts and other devices. They can basically roll onto the floor and then be slowly lowered down, so that they can have their therapy. Again, that's a very unique aspect of this building. And finally, just a few images of the, the exterior of the building relate in a lot of ways to what's currently happening at Norris, relate to a lot of the adjacent properties around, you know, the intent, you can see some of the canopies, et cetera, from the street level to get you into the building. So, the building will be designed thoroughly to give a comprehensive sensory experience to the students. And I think with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Great. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Mr. Scanlon.
Could you just touch on, to remind the public how this is funded? I mean, it's part of a bond, but it's also a partnership. If we could talk a little bit about that, just to refresh everybody's memories?
Yeah, inside of the, the bond program, what the voters approved is 3.4 million dollars, that's part of the bond. And then there's a 6.666 million dollar contribution from the university, from the Med Center. And that's largely, I believe, that information's come to the board, there's a lease in place, so the timing of the completion of this project dovetails in when they need that facility, so we're making sure all of those timelines align well. But that's the funding mechanism behind it. So, it's a little bit over $10 million in total.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fay.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that, I had the same question, I wanted them to remind the public about that. So thank you, Mr. Scanlon, for that. And thank you for talking about the storm shelters. I think there's, that was a question I had from one of my parents, there's one at each end, correct?
Correct.
And then, they'll be able to wheel in and out quickly?
Right. Let me just go back here real quick. So, and it's a little hard to see, but there's a shaded area on the south side of each of the 45-degree angles. So basically, half of the students will typically be within a storm shelter, the other half just simply have to roll across the hall.
Right.
So it's not long distances.
So, thank you for that detail. And I just think this is so exciting, and if you haven't been to JP Lord, if you haven't been to the, so just have a couple more opportunities this year, and this should open in 2018?
Correct.
Is that right? So, graduation is the 13th of May, at like, 1:30? 1:30, thank you, Laura, 1:30 in the afternoon. So if you haven't been before, then I encourage you to come to the graduation ceremony at JP Lord. Like Teresa said, they're like family, because many of them have been there since they were just very small children, and it's just a really neat ceremony to go to, it's, it's just really lovely. And, so I encourage you to go to that if you haven't. And just thank you to the whole committee, and to Mr. Galusha, for all the work that's going into this. And Laura was hired to facilitate this transition, and, and just, I won't be on the board when the school opens, but I'll definitely come when you cut the ribbon, and I'm just very excited about it, so thank you.
Ms. Underwood.
I agree, this is really exciting, so thanks for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. So, I guess a comment first, it's great that you guys are working with Norris Middle School already. I love that this is going right next to Norris. I think there's some collaboration that can happen, and additional volunteer time, so that's really cool. And then my other question was related to, just if there is a community meeting planned, I'm sure this, this area is interested and involved in the neighborhood, and so I'm sure they would be excited to hear what's going on.
Yeah, I think with schematic design approval, that would be the next step, is we'd have some detailed drawings to show. I know we have been talking with, quite a bit with the Norris EdSpec Group, too, on transportation, and what the traffic situation around Moran and some of those other adjacent streets would look like. So there is a good opportunity, still very early on in both of those projects, to come back to the community. We wanted to have something a little bit more defined to share and show, so it's a little more tangible for people to really see where the facility would sit, what's its orientation, you know, where it would go on that property.
And I think it's amazing that when this building opens, it will have been in place for 80 years. And to think that everyone else hasn't, you know, that you had to go to England to find something similar. So, just so grateful that 80 years ago, nearly, someone thought of this need and recognized it and started the process, which I think is pretty impressive. And I also want to thank you for covering the pool information. I have a parent who's been on the EdSpec Committee, and he and I have chatted a couple different times about how excited he is, and how that's a- different times about how excited he is and how that's a very unique system. I don't know exactly what you call it.
It is.
And there aren't maybe a lot of them nationally, is that right? Or that it's something very different than what we might not have here in Omaha currently?
Yeah, that's true. The facility in general, as an architect, I've been doing schools for 25 years, and there's people in our firm that have been doing it for 40. There aren't a lot of models. This will be a national model when it's completed. So you should be very proud of that.
So we need to make sure Ms. Steffi over there heard that and is getting that down. So, very good. Well, thank you so much for presenting, and thank you to everyone who has been on the committee and working so diligently and being innovative and creative and getting this project off the ground. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I think we're going to go to the legislative. So, oh, I'm sorry. That wasn't actually, Adam. There's a motion to approve. I move to approve the, let me go back to it, the schematic design documents for JP Lord Replacements School. So motion by Mrs. Fay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williams. Is there any other discussion among board members on this item? Oh, if not, roll call, please.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
Naina?
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for reminding me. All right. With that, we're going to move on to, what was J-2A legislative update? It's now J-2B. And we thank you, Rochelle, for staying. I know you've got to get back to Lincoln, too, but thank you. And I'm not sure, Mrs. Fay?
Sure. Yes, thank you, Rochelle, for staying from Lincoln. And we will have a, for the board, we'll have a formal legislative session wrap-up at our next full board meeting, and the session's not quite over. So we'll have that formal wrap-up at our next board meeting. But because of the passage of LB-1067 and the implications that that has for the board, for the district, the Legislative Committee asked Connie Kenoki to put together just maybe what the fiscal impact, as far as we can project it, will be of 1067 on the district. And then Rochelle stayed to answer any questions that might come up. Really, we're just talking about 1067 today. So we'll let Connie start.
I did a summary of LB-1067, just going through the different parts and how they would impact the district. And the biggest thing is the repeal of the common levy, the 95-cent levy. And then they left in the ability for the learning community coordinating council to continue to levy for the elementary learning centers. So that was, part that was kept in there. They also changed the governance of the learning community and removed school board members from membership on the council. I did a estimate of what the impact would be if LB-1067 had been in place in the 2016-17 certification of state aid. And basically, we would get approximately the same amount of money from state aid and property tax if we were independent, as we would have if we were part of the learning community. But that's only for this year, because the appropriation's already been set. We know what the values are and everything. The big difference is we would receive 48.8 million more in state aid and 31 million less in property taxes. So it kind of just evened out when I did that analysis. What?
So can you, I'm sorry, Connie, can you, so we're shifting...
More to state aid than we were to property tax?
Yeah, shifting more to state aid than property taxes. And of course, state aid is, you know, going to depend on how that Teosa formula plays out every year. And as Mr. Evans pointed out in his editorial that was in T D S World Herald, it's changed, the formulas changed 22 out of the last ever many 26 years, primarily with a negative impact on the district. So that's where that instability piece comes in, whereas with the common levy, we could count on consistency, more consistency.
Yeah. The thing with property taxes is there's no formula you go through, and you don't have to meet certain criteria. You're able to get property taxes that you levy, so it is a stable source of income. One of the issues with the state aid formula is that it's in a constant state of flux. There's always something that needs to be tweaked or changed, but it has many moving parts. And if you change one part, it impacts other parts, and sometimes there's unintended consequences on that. And there was a provision that was added in 1067 for the Community Achievement Plan, and that was intended to help offset some of the loss we would have in property taxes. And so I did an estimation of what I thought would happen in 2017-18. And if we were still part of the learning community, 47% of our income would be from state aid, and 49% would come from the property taxes. So it's, I guess 53% would come from property taxes. So it's pretty much even on that. But then when we move to being independent in 2017-18, 57% of our income would come from state aid and 43% would come from property taxes. So it's just a complete shift in how we are funded. And with the Community Achievement Plan, they're providing for funding for 2% of our poverty, 2% of our ELL. And then they also provide for students in a district that are in poverty that are more than 40% of our total student population. One of the things that we may need to look at in the future is that the amount distributed under the Community Achievement Plan is capped. So it's capped at, I think it's 0.43% of the statewide average general fund operating expenditures times our students. So based on what the fiscal note said and what I'm estimating is that it would only increase by about $250,000 each year. So it probably won't keep pace with what our needs are as far as poverty. So that is something that we need to watch and possibly make some adjustments to. The, I guess in summary of what it is, I'm thinking that we may be about $3 million short in revenue compared to if we remained in the learning community. But there's a lot of parts, we don't know for sure what's going to happen. We'll get a better picture of the impact in the next few months when they certify aid for 17-18. So we'll be keeping an eye on that and watching the legislation. A concern is that the difference in property tax collected by the district compared to other districts in the learning community, that difference will continue to grow, because the valuation, the property value in Omaha Public Schools is generally flat. This year, it increased by 0.74%. And for the combined valuation of every district in the learning community, it increased by 2.71%. So some districts have double-digit increases, others have about 5% increases in valuation, but we're likely to remain flat as we move forward. So we'll rely more and more on state aid, and there'll continue to be a gap on what they get in property taxes. And then in some of the articles, they talked about how OPS lost money the first few years of the learning community, and then last year, we made money. And actually, if you look at it as one pot of money, whether it comes from property tax or state aid, it's the same. There wouldn't really be a change. So there really aren't any losers. It's more property taxes coming into the district than, for the districts that have high valuation. So they felt that that was a loss to them. But I tend to look at it as just a big pot of money that goes to all of the districts in the learning community and then gets distributed. So just a different point of view.
So, thank you for putting that together. Just a couple of things before the board goes to questions. Right now, National Public Radio is doing a series on how public schools are funded. And so you can go to the NPR website, and there's a great, the very first article is just on this, and how inequitable it is to fund public schools using property tax dollars. There's a map where you can click on any state in the nation and hone right down onto your school district. And it shows you that in the Omaha Public Schools, for example, were about $1,300 under the national average per student and about $3,300 under the statewide average per student. So we are not in any, by any means, overfunding per student in the Omaha Public Schools. So that's just kind of a nice thing that you can go to, easy to read, right there, that NPR is very timely, that they're covering right now. And then I'm glad that you brought up the winners and losers, because as this common levy drama has played out over the last few years, that's been a phrase that's been used a lot. It's been used by the paper, it's been used by other school districts, it's been used by legislators when we talk about winners and losers. And I find it really interesting that when property-rich districts, property-tax-rich districts are, when the resources are distributed in an equitable manner, that they're the losers. And yet, when we're switched to a system that is inherently inequitable by every measure and by every reporting standard, is inherently an equitable system, our kids are never called the losers. But that's what they are, and that's what's going to happen. And it can mark my words that there's going to be consequences for this, not just in dollars and cents, but you're going to see a return to some things that we tried to get away from with the creation of the learning community. And we can talk about all of the consequences and how those are going to play out, you know, the way that we did in 2005. And I, you know, that's my prediction, that that's where we're going to go. But we never talk about when that inequity plays out and our kids get the short end of the stick, no one ever says, well, those kids lost out. That district, they're the losers in the property tax game. It's only when you're a rich district and you don't, you know, and the funds are distributed in an equitable manner, I'm not talking fair and I'm not talking equal, I'm talking equitable, that we talk about winners and losers. And that's just, it's just wrong. I said it was wrong in 2005, and I'll say it's wrong here in 2016. And I hope that you will continue to fight for our kids in an outspoken manner, the way that Mr. Evans did today in that editorial. And I hope that our legislators, as they move on into the next few legislative sessions in particular, and about the 2019 session, that they don't forget. But I fear they will.
One of the perceptions is that because Omaha is so big, we serve 52,000 students, that we have more money than we know what to do with. But it's really, like you said, we're $1,300 below the average for the state, so...
No, we're 30, we're 1,300 below the average for the nation. We're $3,300 below the average for the state, $3,300 below the average for the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I get clarification? Because this is where we've heard from everyone that OPS will come out ahead and will be in great shape. But it looks like from your analysis and looking through it, that the potential exists that we'll actually be a loser, if you want to use the term winners and losers, of 33, or 3.3 million dollars in that very first year of 17-18.
Well, and that's really based on the growth in value that the other districts are experiencing compared to what we have historically experienced here in Omaha.
Right. But that will potentially continue to grow.
Yeah.
And especially with that cap. So I think, I mean, obviously, we're disappointed that the legislation went through, but I think it points out the concerns that we raised during this time period. And we'll have to keep a very close eye on this, because with that cap and with what this is showing us, and if the trend continues, we'll find ourselves in a difficult position, especially not knowing what will happen with the state aid.
Right.
I think that's even the bigger question. Not only with a landlocked district that has not, doesn't have the same opportunity for growth in valuation that suburban districts have. So, Ms. America?
I want to say one good thing first. I am very glad that the legislature did not completely get rid of the learning community, because I do want to acknowledge that they did leave in the leveling authority for the early childhood centers and for the parental education and for the programs that we know are working, because we're seeing that, and we're hearing feedback from the parents that have gone through those programs, that have said it's working, and they're able to make a difference in their children's lives. But at the same time, earlier, Mr. Wayne brought up the issue of equity. And if we want to talk about equity, this is exactly what equity's not. Because our state is basically saying it is okay for a student that lives in an area with high property value, for their school district to spend more per student. It's okay that they have more money coming in. They can spend that money on their students. But they're saying in a district that has the majority of their students living in poverty with low property values, that, as you said, aren't growing, that we should not be spending as much money on our students as those other districts are. And that, to me, is just inherently wrong.
I just have a question for our lobbyist. I think that, lobbyist, whatever. I believe in, was it, hi, was it in this legislative session, or is it going to be considered in the next one, that there was a bill brought up for redistributing lottery proceeds to increase the percentage to go to education?
Yes, there was a bill this session, and I'm not quite sure where that ended up. But there was some money, actually, that ended up in 1067, where some lottery dollars are going to go to districts to provide transition aid for those districts that are exiting the learning community or the common levy. And so those districts, and Connie, do you, I think DC West, Papillion?
Yeah. I think...
Lacy knows who they were. Is that, so some...
West Side.
Some West Side. Those districts, I think, got about half of the amount that they put in at the beginning, okay, for two years.
I guess my point is just that, looking ahead, that I think that as a school district and the school board can discuss that next legislative session. But I think that's something that we should probably look to encourage, is the redistributing of the state lottery funds to increase the amount that goes towards education, because I think, you know, more people play the lottery.
Yeah.
And we might as well benefit from that as another revenue stream. I guess my comments, you know, we, we as a school district, we don't get to necessarily decide, you know, how we're funded. We get to lobby and encourage our state senators to try to increase the revenue as much as possible. The one thing that we do have a lot more control over as a school district is our spending. And that is one of those things that I would like to see our school district get a lot better at, is explaining to the taxpayers how we're spending our money and making sure that we're spending it in the most efficient manner, because I don't think we have in the past been transparent enough to the taxpayers. And I think that it's just kind of been a, it hasn't been ideal, we'll say. And I think now that you're on board, Connie, I'd really encourage you to, you know, work diligently to increase the transparency and to make sure that we are spending the taxpayer money as efficiently as possible. You know, we can only encourage our state legislators and senators to increase our revenue, and that's something that we'll have to pay attention to now that we're more dependent on state aid than our property taxes. But I think we shouldn't lose focus on the fact that, you know, it's unfortunate that some of our more stable funding was taken away with the, with this, you know, adjustment to the learning community. But we always need to make sure that we are focused in as a district on our spending, and that should be our main focus. Thank you.
Can I just add one thing on that? I think on the transparency piece, though, Open Book is an extremely transparent process, and I use it all the time. And when constituents call me and ask for specific figures on how much we're spending, I can guide them to that, and we can work through the dropdown menus. And I know that Mr. Dixon, I don't know if he's still here, has been working with Connie to try to, to actually... to try to, to actually add actuals in there as well as the budget so that you can actually drill down and take a look at those numbers. So I do think that from that perspective, we're very transparent. I think that spending is always something you have to be mindful of and everyone needs to pay attention to that. But I do think that, I just want to remind everybody, we, the Open Book is quite an impressive tool and it's a good one for everybody to use and for constituents to use as well. Mrs. Fay.
Yeah, I was also going to bring up Open Book, so I'm glad that you did that and I hope that the public will take a look at it on our website. I guess I would say a couple of things in response to Mr. Scanlon. One would be I would challenge you to focus in on which areas you think we need to cut, be very specific, because it's very easy to make broad generalizations. We need to be, you know, fiscally conservative and we need to watch where we spend, but, you know, I would challenge you as you go forward with the board to, you know, be specific about where some of those cuts can be made. And I think we also know that in a district that's, what, 73% free and reduced lunch, I think the tipping point is at 40%. And all of the research shows that when you get to 40% poverty, that there, it is the tipping point as far as student achievement and you needing more resources in order to educate a population of students that are in high need. So we're almost double that at 73%. And that's pretty solid evidence that that, that's, you know, where resources need to go is to help balance out that inequity. So, again, we're well beneath the state average for spending per student. We're not, at least by that measure, overspending by any means. And while I'm sure in any large organization, there's always going to be areas where you have to focus on waste and excess, absolutely, because it's a big district with a lot of employees and a lot of buildings, but I see with some of the changes that we've made as far as operations, out of Connie's office, the things that, all of the accountability measures that we've put in as a result of the strategic plan, I think we're better able to see where money is being spent. And so, again, I would just say, what are those areas where there's some waste and let's focus in on those, but let's understand that in a district where you have 73% students on free and reduced lunch, it costs more to educate them. It just does.
Ms. Underwood.
So, just a couple of comments and then a question. I mean, I would agree with most things that are being said. It does make me nervous thinking about the future of funding for OPS, just knowing that historically, the state allocations have been less than sort of stable. I will say, and I have conversations a lot with board members from other districts, and so I will say that I understand where the Douglas County Wests and the Springfield Pot Views are coming from. I get that they have challenges too. They've got a very different makeup than OPS does, obviously. So I hear it a lot, I understand where the issues are, I just, I really liked Mrs. Fay's comments, though, just about the equitable or the inequitable nature of just relying on property taxes. And I will say that other districts also across Nebraska are nervous about the tinkering that's going on with property taxes because that directly impacts, obviously, how schools are funded too. So it's, I guess it's not just an OPS versus the rest of Nebraska issue at all. I mean, one, because the success of OPS directly impacts the success of not only the surrounding districts, but I would say the entire state. And I think that, you know, we've had these conversations at Nebraska Association of School Board meetings where it's, we've had kind of just a united discussion around, around public education funding. And to me, something fundamental has just got to change. This, the reliance on property taxes is just not working, whether you're in a rural setting or an urban setting. You know, and I know that that's come up in the legislature. And I hope that steps are continued to take, are continued to be taken towards kind of looking at a fundamental change. I'm really interested to read up on the study that NPR is doing, so thanks for mentioning that, Mrs. Fay. I'm kind of an NPR nerd anyway and I think that'll be really interesting. So those are my thoughts on that. I think it's a fundamental thing that needs to change and I think it's not just an OPS issue, I think it's an entire state issue. So one question I do have now to get back into the weeds a little bit, and Connie, I think you've been looking at this a little bit, on the, have we kind of looked at, you know, TIF properties and how that might affect our funding? I don't know if you could put a dollar amount towards it, but I think it would be really interesting for the public to understand kind of how TIF impacts the funding that's going towards OPS. And I also want to say, I'm a huge advocate of urban redevelopment, so it's tough, but I'd just be curious to hear what you have to say on that.
Well, that's something that the legislature talks about quite a lot on tipping property. I could get an estimate from the county assessor to find out how much property has been tiffed and the problem with that is when they tiff the property, it stays at what it was when it was tiffed. And then it comes back on the tax rolls, you know, at its new value, I think it's 10 or 15 years later. So, you know, if you look at the value at the time it was tiffed, it's not really a true picture of what the value would be right now. So maybe a little difficult to get a true picture of it, but I can look into that for you.
And do you know what percentage of our district is listed as substandard and blighted and eligible for being tiffed?
No, no, I don't, but I could get that too.
Man, I'm pretty sure we got an email and Dr. Poole said with the amount because we've asked that before. And I know it probably has changed since then a little bit, but that'll give a good basis. I think it was like 16 billion on tax rolls, so we wouldn't get the whole 16 billion. But the issue with TIF is it does get offset by the state equity TOS formula, so it isn't a trade dollar for dollar.
I want to thank Mrs. Underwood for her comments because that is true. It does become a statewide issue and I think I just recently learned that Lexington is actually at 72% poverty. So I think what's really unfortunate in 1067 is that poverty statewide wasn't addressed and that there weren't, that that wasn't put into place and that that process didn't make it through the legislature very far. So I do think that that's a point. And I'm wondering if Mrs. Kenoke could explain to us, because there's been a lot of discussion about open and option enrollment, what that difference is funding-wise for districts and how exactly that works? If you could, please explain that.
Okay. Open enrollment was with the learning community, that any student could go to any district within the learning community and transportation had to be provided to them. What option enrollment is, is when you opt from your resident district to go to another school district. And in the state aid formula, if you have more students coming into your district than you have leaving your district, you get net option funding. And so when the transition happens with LB 1067, there will be more net option funding going to the learning community districts because there's a lot of students that opt out of Omaha Public Schools. We have some coming in, but we have more leaving the district than coming in. So off the top of my head, I can't think of the exact number, but they get approximately $10,000 per student for the option funding. And they get that whether they're equalized or not equalized. So that means it's a revenue source for them regardless of what their needs are or what their resources are.
And under open, there is no funding that's provided?
Right. Under open enrollment, there's no funding provided, they can just go to whatever district. And I, there was a transportation allowance for the learning community provided in the beginning, so that's gone away too, so.
Right. So it's very significant then for districts where their, where their net option is greater.
Yes.
And we know that we don't clearly have the capacity for all the students today that are leaving our district, which is why capacity is such a big issue for us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Wayne.
In our needs analysis, there was a section about equality. I guess it's more of a question for somebody on budget, or Dr. Kenoke. It said that the analysis showed that there's some clear key points where funding drops off quickly, equity formula significantly drops between 87.5 to 81.5 free and reduced lunch. And what it talked about is that we weren't funding equitable across our district internally. And I guess the question is to the budget committee and whoever, have we changed that and addressed that? I know we talked about some budgeting things, but I just wasn't sure if we addressed it. Cause a larger conversation there.
Can you explain, addressed what?
The issue in the needs analysis where it talked about there were clearly funding drop-offs when, significantly between 87.5 to 87.1 free and reduced lunch. And then it had a chart with all this funding on it and it showed where it starts with Hartman. Equity funding drops off dramatically at 87.1 poverty, percent of poverty, starting with Hartman Elementary. And it shows dramatically that there's a difference in funding. My question is, have we addressed that issue?
So I think that one of the things that's happened, well, one of the things that happens is some of those schools have academies, so there are some differences. But starting last year, Mrs. Kenoke sat down and they worked through. So the numbers that are used today are different than, significantly different than the numbers that had been used in the past. And they used a better analysis of need of the building versus how it had been done in the past. Is that correct?
So is it the position of the district that we're equitably funding our schools right now?
Mrs. Kenoke.
I think that's, you know, something you have to look at all the time. It's not, you know, one year you're equitable and the next year you're not. It's something that we continually strive for. One of the differences that may have happened from previous years is that some districts or some buildings had more staff than other buildings did. And it looked like, you know, they were receiving more, more resources than maybe some poverty districts were. But through the staffing conferences and the things we've done the last two years since Charles has come on board and since I came on board, is we're looking at more equity across all of the buildings so that they're staffed the same and there's not deficiencies. And then we're also looking at the persistently low achieving schools to make sure they have extra supports in there. So I think if you did that same analysis now that was done back then, that you'd see a different result. But it is, equity is a moving target and it's something that we always have to work towards to make sure that we're funding the high need schools the way they need to be funded.
And the reason I bring it up is I agree somewhat with Mr. Scanlon that I'd rather focus on what we can control. I know we have to, we get to lobby and things like that and we can call our state senators. And I'm very disheartened that the legislature passed this the way it is. But what I'm more concerned about is how we're funding our schools internally. I think it's hard, at least for some state senators, when we talk about equity across the board, they still say, or they still ask me, yes, I know they ask other board members, how are we funding? And I would like to be able to answer that a little better now because they knew about our needs analysis and they're still not sure. I think an update on that would be critical going into, I mean, I don't know if it's too late now, but going into next year on how we're doing that. I think it's going to be an ongoing process. I think next year there'll still be a fight with the legislature about not just property taxes, but the learning community. I still don't think they're done trying to gut the learning community. So I think it'll still be there. But I think that information and starting now, talking about that as we go into our budgeting process and going into budget next year will be an important dialogue with the state senators.
And we will be meeting with principals and trying to address the formula and how we distribute resources in our district, you know, to all of those buildings. So that is something that we're going to be working on and we'll be bringing that to you as well in the future.
Ms. America.
Just a couple of things. I think, Mr. Wayne, also what you said ties into the work that the Specialty School Review and Recommendation Committee is doing as well with looking at, are the programs that we have in place serving the schools that need those extra supports? So are, is the money going to where it's needed the most? But I also wanted to add, and Mrs. said that goes in well with what Ms. Fay brought about the NPR report and links well with HIREIT as well. It's very hard to do long-term financial planning or to have a specific formula saying this is how we fund our schools when we don't know from year to year what our funding's going to be. Because the legislature can change TOS every year. They can change how that money is distributed literally every year. We can't have really a firm, long-range plan of this is the formula how we're going to fund our schools, knowing it's going to change every single year. We're going to have to change our formula every single year as well.
I think that's a really good point because when we think about, all students need X number of students per classroom, no matter whether it's a poverty school or a non-poverty school. And the fewer resources you have, that just means the fewer resources you have for those extra needs, as Mrs. Fay already said. We know that high poverty schools, and you pretty much know when you get to that 40%, and I've watched it happen in buildings before, it does, it's unbelievable how that tipping point just happens and you sit there and say, wow, what happened? And so I think that that's a really good point and that we'll just have to continue to monitor that. I know the budget committee is meeting Thursday, so we'll get started on the process. Mr. Wayne.
I just want to say I agree with you, Ms. America. That is 100% the problem with our current situation is that it's tweaked every year. I do just want to mention that there was about four years ago, maybe five years ago, we decided to change Title I and it created winners and losers in our district. And that created angst amongst senators too. And so what I'm trying to say is, I want to be able to present whoever is in office, here's what we're doing across the district, that's all I'm asking for. So, but I just remember that was a big conversation and it affected a lot of West Omaha schools. And I remember Pete Pierce and a couple of other people who necessarily weren't tied to the district, but were right around that area, who were very upset as a state senator that their schools were losing money because we created internally winners and losers. So, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Rochelle or Mrs. Kenoke? If not, thank you so much. And thank you to Mrs. Fay who worked on the legislative, who was the chair of legislative committee, did an outstanding job of going to Lincoln and of staying in touch with Mr. Lindsay and our consultants as we worked through this. And so I just want to thank her for all the hard work that she did and making sure we were all on that call every Friday afternoon and giving input. And even though this didn't come out the way we intended, I hope that the board members who will continue on this board will continue to fight for students in poverty in this district and everywhere in the state. So with that, I think we're, thank you very much for being here. And with that, we're going to move on to J2C, policy recommendations, first reading of the 1,000 series, policy 4006, 5008, and 5202. So Mr. Ray, right now, is passing out a little update and this comes to you, this is not the entire series 1,000. We pulled a few out that we still had questions on, some legal issues and just trying to have better understanding. And we need some time, I think, to work with OEA and legal and work through a few of the policies that aren't on here. But the policy committee met and these policies, we felt like were non-controversial and I think, for the most part. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Megan Neelis-Bresh and let her walk you through those and also the extra three that we happen to have on as well.
President Gauding, Vice President Williams, members of the Board of Education.
President Gauding, Vice President Williams, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Evans. Before you this evening are the thousands that the policy committee forwarded to all of you. I'd like to just highlight one in particular, 1210, the Title IX Policy and Grievance Procedure. We spent a training here last week with the principals and we walked through this recommended policy. We told them it would be coming in front of the Board of Education. Helps guide complaints under Title IX in that process. We added just a few comments to, to that document and the district website under the grievance procedure so that people who have Title IX complaints, whether that be the community, whether that be a student, whether that be a staff member, that they know where they can go with regard to the Title IX policy to get forms with regard to complaints. Also, we've got policy 4006, which is the absence from the buildings. There was some issue with regard to the 30 minutes not being sometimes enough time for staff member to be gone. And so we have, we're recommending removal of number two in front, in front of you this evening, under policy 4006. That allows the flexibility with regard to having a little bit longer time for the principal to make that decision at their individual buildings. So that's kind of the highlights. We also have the attendance policy. Under that section, we've got Mr. Corner here this evening, if you have any specific questions with regard to that. But we added some examples to more clearly delineate excused and unexcused absences. These are common issues that come up, and so wanted to clearly put those issues. But we also did not want to limit those issues. So if there were other things that would come up, that gives some discretion with regard to excused and unexcused absences. And so you will see those additional listed items on the back of that policy. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mrs. Fay?
I just had one question. And I apologize, because I didn't, I don't know why I didn't write down which policy it was under, but it had to do with communicating. It mentions a monthly online publication for outside groups to put, get information out to more than one school. Like, I think the policy said, if you were going to disseminate information out of school, then you work through the principal. But if it was to more than one school, then it referenced a monthly online publication. And I just wasn't aware of that publication. So...
I'm sorry, Mrs. Fay, I don't recall which policy that is.
And I apologize, I didn't write it.
It's been a while since I've looked at.
Lacy says it's 1060.
1060.
It's number three in 1060.
Yeah. So, yeah. So number three in 1060 says, if you're seeking to distribute flyers of announcements concerning non-school events to a class or a school, then you get approval from the principal. But if you're seeking to distribute flyers of announcements concerning non-school events to more than one school, then it says that the Office of District Communications provides a monthly online publication that serves as a vehicle. And I just was not familiar with the monthly online publication. I know we used to have a printed one that went home that you could, but that was back in the day.
Mrs. Fay, the only publication that I'm aware of is a quarterly and it's OPS News.
Right.
It's currently.
That's, that's not this.
Right.
This is different. I know. It's, did you know that? It was in.
So I'm thinking maybe that can be referenced, too. We have like a community posting section on the website. If it's not that, then I'm not sure.
I think we probably ought to clarify that.
No, that's a good point.
We will take policy 1060 back under advisement and try to get the corrected information.
Great. Sometimes we have great ideas of what we're going to do and no way to follow through. Thank you very much, Mrs. Fay. Okay, so, does anybody else have any other questions about any of the other policies? Okay, if not, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the 1,000 policy series before us, except for 1060, policy 4006, 5008, and 5202.
So moved.
So motion by Ms. Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Merrick. Okay, are there any other discussions between board members? Ms. Merrick?
Just because I, I heard someone ask. I know we discussed this at the policy committee meeting, but this is not the first time that these have been in front of the board. We've had them on our agenda at two previous meetings and not taken any action on them, because we wanted more time to review and provide feedback.
This is the first time?
This is the first time we're actually taking action on them, yes.
We've attempted to take action before and then we, we've not done it, because it hasn't quite worked out for us, which is fine. So there's a motion by Ms. Williams and a second by Ms. Merrick. Hearing no other comments. Mr. Ray, roll call.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Upstate.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Mr. Wayne?
Williams.
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gauding?
Aye.
Merrick?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Nynai?
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose of closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, legal counsel, Cecilia Carter, Dr. Tony Turnquist, and Mark Warnicki. Negotiations, pending litigation, real estate, and legal advice. Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Merrick. Roll call, please.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gauding?
Aye.
Merrick?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Nynai?
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose of closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, legal counsel, Cecilia Carter, and Dr. Tony Turnquist, and Mr. Mark Warnicki. Negotiations, pending litigation, real estate, and legal advice. Let the record reflect the board went into closed session at 9:12 PM.